The morning bell at Roosevelt High School rang at exactly seven forty-five AM, but David Martinez had already been working for three hours. Steam rose from the freshly mopped hallways as the custodial cart squeaked softly down the main corridor. Before we jump back in, tell us where you're tuning in from. And if this story touches you, make sure you're subscribed because tomorrow I've saved something extra special for you. The forty-two-year-old janitor moved with a precision that most people wouldn't expect from someone pushing a mop bucket. His movements were deliberate, economical, efficient. Twenty-three years in the Navy SEALs had taught him that every task, no matter how mundane, deserved to be done with excellence. But David's excellence went unnoticed by the students streaming through the doors of one of California's most elite private schools. To them, he was invisible furniture, just another service worker, whose name they didn't know and whose story they'd never bothered to ask. The irony wasn't lost on David that he'd spent over two decades protecting the freedom of people who now looked right through him as if he didn't exist. Roosevelt High School sat on forty pristine acres in the heart of Marin County, where million-dollar homes dotted the hillsides and Tesla charging stations outnumbered parking meters. The school's Gothic revival architecture spoke of old money and older traditions. Its ivy-covered walls housing the children of tech moguls, venture capitalists, and entertainment industry titans. Tuition here cost more per year than most people, made in salary, and every student knew it. David had taken the custodial job eight months ago after his wife Sarah's cancer diagnosis had drained their savings and forced him into early retirement from his career as a military contractor. The health insurance was good, the hours allowed him to be home for Sarah's treatments, and honest work had never intimidated a man who'd crawled through Taliban tunnels and scaled cliff faces in Afghanistan. But he hadn't anticipated the particular. Brand of casual cruelty that came with wealth insulated teenagers who'd never learned that respect was earned, not purchased. The morning routine was always the same. David would arrive at four-thirty AM to begin the deep cleaning that couldn't be done during school hours. He'd sanitize the chemistry labs, restock the bathrooms, empty trash cans that often contained items worth more than his weekly paycheck, carelessly discarded. He'd repair the small damages that accumulated throughout each day, patch the holes punched in walls during fits of teenage rage, replace the mirrors cracked by thrown objects, clean the graffiti that somehow appeared overnight despite the school's security cameras. By the time students began arriving, David would transition to maintenance mode, moving quietly through the halls with his cart, becoming part of the background scenery that enabled their education to happen seamlessly. He took pride in his work, even if no one noticed. The floors gleamed under the fluorescent lights, the windows sparkled without streaks, and every surface was sanitized and spotless. It was a matter of professional integrity that stretched back to his military training, where attention to detail could mean the difference between life and death. David's background wasn't something he advertised or discussed. The other custodial staff knew he was former military, but they assumed he'd been a regular enlisted man, maybe a mechanic or cook. They had no idea that David Martinez had been part of SEAL Team Six, that he'd completed over forty classified missions across three different theaters of operation, that his chest housed enough commendations to fill a small museum. The Presidential Unit Citation, three bronze stars, two purple hearts, and a Navy cross sat in a box in his closet, gathering dust while he mopped the floors of teenagers who thought courage meant standing up to their parents about curfew. The transformation from Lieutenant Commander Martinez to David the Janitor hadn't been easy. After Sarah's diagnosis, military contracting work had become impossible. The overseas deployments, the unpredictable schedules, the high-stress environments that had once energized him now felt selfish when his wife needed consistency and support. So he'd hung up his tactical gear, traded his security clearance for a security uniform, and learned to find purpose in making sure these privileged kids had a clean, safe environment to learn in. Most days, the invisibility was almost a relief. David could work in peace, lost in the meditative rhythm of cleaning, thinking about Sarah's treatment schedule or planning small improvements to their modest apartment. He'd developed a system for everything, approaches to each task that maximized efficiency while maintaining his exacting standards. The gymnasium required a specific pattern of mopping to avoid streaking on the hardwood. The science wing needed extra attention to chemical spills and fume hood maintenance. The administrative offices accumulated dust in precise patterns that revealed traffic flows and usage statistics. But some days, the casual disrespect cut deeper than others. It wasn't always intentional cruelty, though that existed too. More often, it was the simple failure to acknowledge his humanity. Students would drop trash directly in front of him, not maliciously, but with the same thoughtlessness they might show toward a garbage disposal. They'd walk through his freshly mopped areas without hesitation, leaving muddy footprints that represented an extra hour of work. They'd lean against walls he'd just cleaned, leaving handprints and smudges that spoke to a fundamental disconnect between action and consequence. The worst part wasn't the mess itself. David had cleaned far worse things in far worse places. It was the assumption that his time, his effort, his dignity were somehow less valuable than theirs. These were kids who'd been raised to believe that service workers existed in a different category of human being, that manual labor was beneath consideration because the people who performed it were beneath notice. Preparing and narrating this story took us a lot of time, so if you are enjoying it, subscribe to our channel. It means a lot to us. Now, back to the story. David had tried to remember his own teenage years, growing up in East Los Angeles where his single mother cleaned office buildings at night to pay for his school clothes. He'd understood early that respect was universal, that the janitor who cleaned his high school worked just as hard as the teachers who taught in it deserved the same basic courtesy as the principal who ran it. But those lessons came from necessity, from a community where everyone understood struggle because everyone lived it. These Roosevelt High students lived in a different universe entirely. Their struggles involved choosing between multiple college acceptance letters or deciding which luxury car to request for their sixteenth birthday. They'd never watched a parent work multiple jobs, never wondered if the electricity would be shut off, never learned that dignity came from effort rather than inheritance. In their world, service workers were props in the story of their lives, background characters whose inner lives and histories were irrelevant to the main narrative. The teaching staff treated David better, though even their kindness sometimes carried undertones of condescension. They'd thank him for his work, ask about his weekend, make small talk about sports or weather. But there was always a distance, a recognition of hierarchy that kept conversations surface level. He was reliable, invisible David who kept their classrooms clean and their trash cans empty. None of them had ever asked about his background or seemed curious about the life experiences that had brought him to Roosevelt High. Principal Jennifer Walsh was different, though. She'd hired David personally after his background check had revealed his military service, and she'd made a point of checking in with him regularly during his first months on the job. Walsh was a former public school administrator who'd taken the Roosevelt position to pay for her daughter's medical school, and she understood the sacrifice that came with choosing steady work over prestigious careers. She'd served as a Navy reservist during college and recognized something in David's bearing that spoke to shared experience. Still, even Walsh didn't know the full extent of David's background. The SEAL designation wasn't something that appeared on standard employment forms, and David saw no reason to complicate his new life with stories from his old one. He was a janitor now, a good one, and that was enough. The past was past, locked away in classified files and fading memories that served no purpose in his current reality. The student body at Roosevelt High represented a fascinating cross-section of American privilege. There were the tech inheritors, kids whose parents had founded startups or held executive positions at major corporations. Their casual conversations involved stock options and initial public offerings, venture capital rounds and acquisition rumors. They dressed in deliberately casual clothes that cost more than most people's monthly salaries, wore sneakers that required lottery systems to purchase, carried bags that had waiting lists measured in years. Then there were the entertainment industry kids, children of actors and directors and producers whose names appeared in movie credits and tabloid headlines. They moved through the halls with a different kind of confidence, one that came from growing up in the spotlight, understanding that attention was currency and controversy was just another form of marketing. Their problems involved paparazzi and premier invitations, script readings, and audition schedules. The financial sector children formed another distinct group, kids whose parents managed hedge funds or investment portfolios worth more than small countries' gross domestic products. They spoke casually about market fluctuations and economic indicators, discussed vacation homes in multiple time zones, planned gap years that involved starting their own companies or foundations. Despite their different backgrounds, these students shared certain assumptions about the world and their place in it. They expected excellence in their environment because they'd never experienced anything less. The food in their cafeteria was prepared by trained chefs. The library contained first-edition books and original manuscripts. The science labs featured equipment that most universities couldn't afford. They assumed that invisible armies of workers maintained their comfort, that problems were solved by other people, that consequences were things that happened to individuals with less money or influence. David observed these dynamics during his daily work, noting the social hierarchies and power structures that govern teenage life even in this rarefied environment. There were still popular kids and outcasts, still romantic drama and academic pressure, still the fundamental challenges of adolescence that transcended economic circumstances. But everything was amplified by the wealth and privilege that surrounded these students, creating a unique ecosystem where normal teenage problems were solved with resources that most families couldn't imagine accessing. The bullying at Roosevelt High was sophisticated, rarely involving physical confrontation or obvious cruelty that might result in disciplinary action. Instead, it took the form of social ostracism, economic intimidation, and psychological manipulation that left fewer visible marks but could be equally devastating. Students would be excluded from parties or study groups, ignored in hallways or classroom discussions, subjected to subtle comments about their clothes or cars or family circumstances that gradually eroded self-confidence. David had witnessed these dynamics during his months at the school, seen promising students slowly withdraw from social interaction, watched academic performance decline as emotional health deteriorated. The teachers and administrators were often unaware of the sophisticated cruelty occurring under their noses, partly because the perpetrators were skilled at avoiding detection and partly because the victims were reluctant to report problems that seemed minor when described individually but were crushing when experienced collectively. One group in particular had caught David's attention over the past several months. They were led by a senior named Brandon Chen, whose father had founded a successful gaming company and whose mother served on multiple corporate boards. Brandon was intelligent, charismatic, and utterly ruthless in his treatment of anyone he perceived as beneath his social status. His inner circle included Jessica Walsh, the principal's daughter, who used her access to administrative information for social advantage, Marcus Thompson, whose family owned a chain of luxury hotels, and Ashley Martinez, whose last name she shared with David but whose circumstances couldn't have been more different. These four students moved through Roosevelt High like royalty, secure in their positions at the top of the social hierarchy, confident that their family connections would protect them from any consequences their behavior might generate. They'd perfected the art of institutional manipulation, understanding exactly how far they could push before facing real accountability, knowing which teachers were susceptible to parental pressure and which administrators prioritized donor relationships over student welfare. Their favorite targets were scholarship students, the small percentage of Roosevelt High's population who attended on academic merit or need-based aid rather than family wealth. These students represented everything Brandon's group felt threatened by proof that success could be earned rather than inherited, evidence that intelligence and work ethic could overcome economic disadvantage, living reminders that their own achievements were often products of circumstance rather than character. The harassment was always plausibly deniable, carefully calibrated to avoid the kinds of obvious violations that would trigger disciplinary action. A scholarship student might find their locker mysteriously jammed before important exams, their parking spot taken by expensive cars that somehow avoided tickets, their project partnerships dissolved at the last minute, leaving them to complete group work individually. Their social media would be flooded with anonymous accounts posting cruel comments about their appearance or family circumstances. Their academic work would be questioned through whispered rumors about cheating or special treatment. David had watched this pattern repeat itself with multiple victims over his months at Roosevelt High, each time feeling a growing anger that he forced himself to suppress. This wasn't his fight, he told himself. He was there to do his job, earn his paycheck, maintain the health insurance that kept Sarah alive. Getting involved in student politics would only complicate his life and potentially jeopardize the stability his family desperately needed. But the military code that had governed David's life for over two decades didn't simply evaporate because he'd changed careers. The SEAL ethos was burned into his DNA: Never leave a fallen comrade, complete the mission regardless of personal cost, protect those who cannot protect themselves. Every day that he watched vulnerable students being systematically destroyed by privileged bullies, every incident that he witnessed without intervention, every cry for help that he failed to answer was a violation of everything he'd once sworn to uphold. The cognitive dissonance was becoming unbearable. David found himself lying awake at night, replaying scenes from the school hallways, wondering if his silence made him complicit in the cruelty he observed. Sarah would ask about his day, and he'd describe the routine maintenance tasks while omitting the human drama that increasingly dominated his thoughts. She was fighting her own battle against cancer, enduring chemotherapy treatments that left her weak and nauseated, struggling to maintain optimism in the face of uncertain prognosis. The last thing she needed was to worry about her husband's internal conflicts over teenage social dynamics. But the internal conflicts were intensifying with each passing day. David's military training had taught him to identify threats and neutralize them efficiently to protect the innocent and punish the guilty without hesitation or remorse. The rules of engagement at Roosevelt High were different, governed by policies and procedures that seemed designed to protect the perpetrators rather than the victims, influenced by financial considerations that placed donor satisfaction above student welfare. The breaking point was approaching, though David didn't recognize it yet. Like most veterans adjusting to civilian life, he'd assumed that his military skills and experiences were no longer relevant to his current circumstances. He'd locked away Lieutenant Commander Martinez along with his uniforms and commendations, believing that David the Janitor needed to be a completely different person with different values and different responses to injustice. He was wrong about that, as he would soon discover in the most dramatic way possible. The morning of March fifteenth started like any other, with David arriving at Roosevelt High in the predawn darkness to begin his cleaning routine. The school felt different in those early hours, peaceful and quiet, empty of the social tensions that would fill the hallways once students arrived. David could work without interruption, lose himself in the meditative rhythm of scrubbing and mopping, pretend for a few hours that his job was simply about maintaining a building rather than witnessing the systematic destruction of young people's spirits. Spring break was still two weeks away, and the academic pressure was intensifying as students prepared for final exams and college application deadlines. The atmosphere at Roosevelt High had grown increasingly competitive, with students jockeying for class rankings and scholarship opportunities that could influence their entire futures. For most of the student body, these pressures were manageable annoyances, temporary obstacles on paths that had been predetermined by family wealth and connections. But for the scholarship students, the stakes were existential. Their presence at Roosevelt High represented opportunities that could transform not just their own lives but the circumstances of their entire families. Academic failure meant more than disappointment or delayed graduation. It meant returning to underfunded public schools, abandoning dreams of elite colleges, accepting that poverty would be permanent rather than temporary. Brandon Chen's group understood these dynamics perfectly and used them as weapons in their ongoing campaign of psychological warfare. They'd learned that the most effective way to destroy a scholarship student wasn't through obvious bullying that might trigger intervention, but through systematic erosion of academic performance and social connections that would ultimately result in voluntary withdrawal from the school. Their current target was a junior named Michael Rodriguez, whose admission to Roosevelt High had been featured in the local newspaper as a feel-good story about academic excellence transcending economic circumstances. Michael's father worked construction, his mother cleaned houses, and his younger sister attended public school while the family saved every penny to support his education at Roosevelt High. The pressure on Michael to succeed was enormous, not just from his own ambitions, but from the hopes and sacrifices of everyone who loved him. Michael was everything that Brandon's group despised, genuinely intelligent rather than artificially enhanced by expensive tutoring, hardworking rather than entitled, humble rather than arrogant. His presence at Roosevelt High was a constant reminder that their own achievements were often products of privilege rather than merit, that success could be earned rather than inherited. That character mattered more than bank accounts. The harassment had been building for months, carefully orchestrated to avoid detection while maximizing psychological impact. Michael's locker had been vandalized repeatedly, his textbooks stolen or damaged, his project materials mysteriously disappeared before important deadlines. Anonymous social media accounts had been created to spread rumors about his family's legal status, his academic integrity, his personal hygiene. Teachers who praised his work in class would later receive anonymous complaints about favoritism toward minority students. The campaign was working. Michael's grades had begun to slip as stress and exhaustion took their toll. His social isolation had deepened as other students learned to avoid association with someone who'd been marked for destruction by the school's power structure. His confidence had eroded to the point where he second-guessed every answer in class, every paper he submitted, every interaction with teachers or classmates. David had watched this systematic destruction with growing anger and frustration. He'd seen Michael working alone in empty classrooms during lunch periods, studying in the library after school while other students socialized, carrying himself with the defeated posture of someone who'd learned to expect cruelty rather than kindness from the world around him. Every instinct in David's body screamed for intervention, for justice, for the kind of direct action that had defined his military career. But he'd maintained his silence, convinced that involvement would only make things worse for everyone involved. He was a janitor, not a counselor or administrator. His job was to clean floors and empty trash cans, not to solve the complex social problems of privileged teenagers. Getting involved would likely result in his termination, which would mean losing the health insurance that kept Sarah alive. The math was simple: one student suffering against his wife's survival. There was really no choice at all. That calculation was about to be tested in ways that David couldn't have imagined. The confrontation that would change everything began in the mathematics wing of Roosevelt High School at exactly two forty-seven PM on a Tuesday afternoon. David was replacing fluorescent bulbs in the hallway when he heard the commotion coming from the advanced calculus classroom. What started as muffled voices quickly escalated into something that made his combat-trained senses snap to attention. Michael Rodriguez sat at his desk, surrounded by Brandon Chen and his crew in what appeared to be a casual conversation, but felt charged with the kind of tension that preceded violence. David moved closer to the doorway, his cleaning cart providing natural cover as he strained to hear the exchange that was clearly more than academic discussion. Brandon leaned against Michael's desk with practiced casualness, his voice carrying the particular tone of someone who enjoyed having absolute power over another human being. The conversation was about the upcoming calculus competition, a statewide event that would determine scholarship opportunities for college-bound students. Michael had been selected to represent Roosevelt High, an honor that had been announced during morning assembly to scattered applause. The selection had not sat well with Brandon's group, who viewed academic recognition as another form of social capital that should be distributed according to family status rather than actual merit. They'd spent the past week devising ways to ensure that Michael's participation would be either eliminated or sabotaged. And today, they were implementing their plan with the kind of methodical cruelty that had made them so effective at destroying their targets. Jessica Walsh had obtained a copy of Michael's competition entry through her access to administrative files, courtesy of her mother's position as principal. The document contained personal information that Michael had been required to submit as part of his application, including details about his family's financial situation, his parents' education levels, and his long-term academic goals. This private information was now being used as ammunition in a psychological assault designed to remind Michael of his inferior social status. Marcus Thompson held up his phone, displaying social media posts that he claimed showed Michael's family at various locations around town. The photos were legitimate but had been taken out of context and paired with captions that suggested the Rodriguez family was somehow cheating the system, living beyond their means while claiming poverty for scholarship purposes. The implication was clear. Michael's presence at Roosevelt High was fraudulent, and his academic success was built on deception. Ashley Martinez contributed her own evidence, producing printed emails that appeared to show communication between Michael and tutoring services that charged hundreds of dollars per hour. The emails were sophisticated forgeries, created with enough technical skill to appear authentic but containing subtle inconsistencies that would eventually expose them as fabrications. However, in the moment, they served their purpose of making Michael question whether anyone would believe his denials. David watched this orchestrated destruction unfold with growing fury, recognizing the tactical sophistication that went far beyond typical teenage cruelty. This was psychological warfare conducted with resources and planning that would have impressed military intelligence officers directed against a seventeen-year-old boy whose only crime was excelling academically while poor. The conversation grew more aggressive as Brandon's group realized that Michael wasn't responding with the immediate capitulation they'd expected. Instead of begging or crying or offering to withdraw from the competition, Michael was maintaining his dignity despite the obvious fear in his eyes. This resistance only intensified their efforts, triggering the kind of escalation that David had witnessed in combat zones when intimidation tactics failed to achieve desired results. Brandon's voice took on an edge as he leaned closer to Michael, invading his personal space in a invading his personal space in a way that made the power dynamic unmistakable. He began detailing the consequences that would follow if Michael didn't voluntarily withdraw from the calculus competition, painting a picture of systematic harassment that would make his remaining time at Roosevelt High unbearable. The threats were specific enough to be credible but vague enough to avoid obvious criminal liability. Jessica Walsh added her own promises of administrative complications, suggesting that her mother could be convinced to investigate academic irregularities in Michael's transcript. The investigation would find nothing, of course, but the process would be humiliating and time-consuming, designed to distract from studies during the crucial final months of junior year when college preparation was most intensive. Marcus Thompson described social media campaigns that would expand beyond Roosevelt High to include Michael's family members, his former schools, and potential colleges where he might apply. The digital harassment would follow him wherever he went, creating a permanent record of manufactured controversies that could influence admissions decisions and scholarship awards for years to come. Ashley Martinez outlined financial pressures that could be brought to bear on Michael's family, including anonymous complaints to immigration authorities, tax audits, and housing inspections that would create legal expenses the Rodriguez family couldn't afford. The threats were delivered with the casual confidence of someone who'd never faced consequences for weaponizing government institutions against vulnerable families. David felt his military training surge to the surface as he recognized a clear pattern of terrorist tactics being employed against a civilian target. The systematic nature of the threats, the coordination between multiple actors, the deliberate targeting of family members to maximize psychological impact, all of this fell well within definitions of domestic terrorism that he'd studied extensively during his SEAL career. Michael's response surprised everyone in the room, including David. Instead of surrendering to the overwhelming pressure, the young man stood up slowly and looked each of his tormentors in the eye before speaking in a voice that trembled with emotion but remained remarkably steady given the circumstances. He told them that his father had worked construction for twenty-three years, that his hands were permanently stained with concrete dust, and his back was bent from decades of manual labor, that every dollar spent on Michael's education represented overtime shifts and weekend work that stole time from family dinners and Little League games. He described his mother's cleaning business, how she scrubbed toilets and mopped floors for families who treated her like invisible furniture, how she smiled and said thank you to people who spoke to her like she was mentally deficient because English was her second language. Michael explained that his younger sister wore hand-me-down clothes and played with toys from garage sales because every spare penny went toward his Roosevelt High tuition, that she'd learned to do her homework by streetlight when the electricity was shut off, that she'd never complained because she understood that education was the family's path to something better. He told them that the calculus competition represented more than academic recognition, that it was validation for every sacrifice his family had made, proof that their investment in his education was worthwhile, evidence that poverty didn't have to be permanent if you were willing to work hard enough to escape it. The speech should have generated sympathy, or at least grudging respect from any audience with basic human decency. Instead, it triggered something much darker in Brandon's group, revealing the fundamental cruelty that lurked beneath their privileged exteriors. They weren't just bullying Michael for entertainment or social positioning, they were actively trying to destroy the hope that education could overcome economic disadvantage. Brandon's response was swift and vicious, mocking Michael's family. Story as manipulation, designed to generate undeserved sympathy from teachers and administrators. He suggested that sob stories about working-class sacrifice were common tactics used by scholarship students to avoid accountability for their academic limitations, that Michael's presence at Roosevelt High was a form of intellectual affirmative, action that lowered standards for everyone. Jessica Walsh added her own analysis, claiming that students like Michael created unfair competition for legitimate applicants whose families had invested properly in their children's education through private tutoring, test preparation courses, and other advantages that money could buy. She argued that academic merit was meaningless without the character development that came from growing up in successful families. Marcus Thompson contributed economic arguments about resource allocation, suggesting that scholarship students consumed educational opportunities that would be better utilized by families who could afford to maximize them through supplementary investments. He painted Michael's academic success as theft from more deserving students who understood how to leverage educational advantages properly. Ashley Martinez offered the most personal attacks, questioning Michael's character by suggesting that his academic achievements were products of cheating, special treatment from sympathetic teachers, or grade inflation designed to support the school's diversity statistics. She claimed that his family's financial struggles were evidence of poor decision-making that disqualified him from elite educational opportunities. The verbal assault continued for nearly ten minutes, with each member of Brandon's group contributing layers of psychological abuse designed to systematically destroy Michael's self-confidence and academic motivation. They weren't simply expressing prejudice or teenage cruelty. They were conducting a sophisticated campaign of character assassination that demonstrated remarkable understanding of psychological pressure points. David watched this systematic destruction while struggling with the most intense internal conflict of his adult life. Every instinct developed through decades of military service screamed for immediate intervention to protect someone who couldn't protect themselves. The SEAL ethos that had governed his professional conduct was being violated with each passing moment that he failed to act. But the practical considerations that had kept him silent for months remained unchanged. Intervention would likely result in his termination from Roosevelt High, which would mean losing the health insurance that funded Sarah's cancer treatments. The choice between one student's psychological welfare and his wife's physical survival should have been straightforward, but the military code burned so deeply into David's identity made the calculation agonizing. The decision was taken away from him when Brandon Chen made a critical tactical error. Frustrated by Michael's continued resistance to psychological pressure, he decided to escalate to physical intimidation that crossed legal lines and triggered David's automatic response protocols. Brandon grabbed Michael's backpack and dumped its contents across the classroom floor, scattering textbooks, notebooks, and personal items in a display of dominance that was meant to demonstrate his absolute power over Michael's academic life. The action itself was relatively minor, barely qualifying as assault under most legal definitions, but it represented a line crossed that activated David's protective instincts. Marcus Thompson followed Brandon's lead by kicking Michael's calculator across the room, sending the expensive device crashing into the wall where it broke into several pieces. The calculator represented weeks of saved lunch money for Michael's family, a significant financial investment that had been destroyed casually for no purpose other than psychological dominance. Jessica Walsh contributed by tearing pages from Michael's notebook, destroying weeks of careful class notes and homework assignments that would be impossible to recreate before upcoming exams. She scattered the torn pages like confetti while laughing at Michael's obvious distress over the academic damage being inflicted. Ashley Martinez completed the physical assault by shoving Michael back into his desk chair when he attempted to gather his scattered belongings. The shove wasn't hard enough to cause serious injury, but it was clearly intended to demonstrate that resistance would result in escalated violence, that Michael's only option was complete submission to their demands. The entire sequence lasted less than thirty seconds, but it represented exactly the kind of coordinated assault that David had been trained to recognize and neutralize throughout his military career. The tactical coordination, the escalating violence, the targeting of a vulnerable individual who couldn't defend himself, all of this triggered automatic responses that had been reinforced through thousands of hours of training and real-world application. David Martinez ceased to exist in that moment, replaced by Lieutenant Commander Martinez, Navy SEAL, whose primary mission was to protect those who couldn't protect themselves regardless of personal cost or consequences. The transition was so complete that he later had difficulty remembering the specific thought process that led to his intervention. Only that one moment, he was a janitor watching injustice unfold, and the next moment, he was moving with lethal precision to neutralize threats against a protected person. His approach was silent and swift, utilizing movement techniques designed to close distance without alerting targets to incoming danger. Brandon's group was so focused on their victim that they never noticed the custodial cart being abandoned in the hallway or the sound of combat boots moving across classroom tile with predatory stealth. David's voice, when he finally spoke, carried the kind of authority that had been developed through years of commanding elite soldiers in life-or-death situations. It wasn't loud or aggressive, but it filled the classroom with unmistakable menace that made everyone freeze instantly. He told them to step away from Michael immediately, to gather the scattered belongings and place them carefully back on the desk to apologize for their behavior and leave the classroom without another word. The commands were delivered in the tone of someone who expected immediate compliance and was prepared to enforce that expectation through whatever means necessary. Brandon Chen's response revealed the fundamental disconnect between his privileged background and the reality of facing someone with actual power rather than inherited authority. He attempted to assert dominance through social positioning, demanding to know who David thought he was and threatening to report his interference to school administration. The response demonstrated complete failure to recognize the danger he was facing, treating David like another service worker who could be intimidated through threats of economic consequences. Brandon had spent his entire life in environments where money translated directly into power, where authority came from family connections rather than personal capability, where conflicts were resolved through administrative procedures rather than physical confrontation. David's reply was educational in ways that Brandon would never forget. He explained, in the calm tone of someone discussing weather patterns, that he was a professional problem solver who specialized in neutralizing threats against innocent people. He noted that Brandon's group had just committed assault, destruction of property, and criminal intimidation against a minor, actions that constituted felonies under California state law. He further observed that their coordination suggested premeditation, that their targeting of Michael's family suggested organized criminal activity, that their use of institutional resources suggested corruption of public officials. The legal analysis was delivered with the precision of someone who'd spent years working with military lawyers on rules of engagement and escalation protocols. Brandon's attempt to invoke his father's business connections as protection was met with the kind of amused indifference that David might have shown toward a child threatening to tell their parents about a scraped knee. He explained that civilian authority structures held no relevance in situations involving clear and present danger to protected persons, that federal law provided extensive protections for individuals defending others from criminal assault. The E education continued as David described the various ways that Brandon's group could face consequences for their actions, ranging from school disciplinary procedures to criminal prosecution to civil liability for damages. He noted that their privileged backgrounds would likely generate additional scrutiny rather than protection, that wealthy families attacking working-class students created exactly the kind of media narrative that prosecutors and civil rights organizations love to pursue. Jessica Walsh attempted to assert her mother's administrative authority as protection from consequences, apparently believing that family connections within the school system would shield her from accountability. Her confidence in institutional protection revealed the depth of corruption that had allowed this pattern of abuse to continue unchecked for so long. David's response demonstrated the fundamental difference between real authority and administrative convenience. He explained that federal civil rights laws superseded local school policies, that criminal assault remained criminal assault regardless of the perpetrator's family connections, that constitutional protections applied equally to all citizens regardless of their economic circumstances. He further noted that Jessica's access to confidential student information suggested violation of federal privacy laws, that her mother's potential involvement in covering up criminal activity could result in federal charges against school administrators. That institutional liability could reach levels that threatened the school's continued operation. Marcus Thompson tried a different approach, suggesting that the entire situation was a misunderstanding that could be resolved through private negotiation between families. His proposal revealed sophisticated understanding of how wealthy families typically handled legal problems, using financial settlements and non-disclosure agreements to avoid public accountability for their children's criminal behavior. David's rejection of this approach was immediate and absolute. He explained that criminal assault against vulnerable individuals was not a private matter subject to family negotiation, that justice could not be purchased through financial settlements, that public accountability was necessary to prevent future incidents against other victims. He noted that Marcus's suggestion itself constituted obstruction of justice, that attempts to resolve criminal matters through private agreements violated federal law, that wealthy families who believed they could buy their way out of consequences for violent crime were exactly the kind of defendants that prosecutors loved to pursue as examples. Ashley Martinez made the final attempt to escape consequences by claiming that their actions constituted harmless teenage pranks rather than serious criminal behavior. Her argument revealed the fundamental disconnect between privileged perception and legal reality, the assumption that wealth somehow reduced the criminality of assault and intimidation. David's response was perhaps the most educational of all, delivered with the patient tone of someone explaining basic concepts to particularly slow students. He described the specific criminal charges that applied to each of their actions, the potential sentences that conviction would carry, the impact that felony records would have on college applications and future career prospects. He explained that assault was assault regardless of the victim's economic status, that destruction of property was destruction of property regardless of the perpetrator's family wealth, that criminal intimidation was criminal intimidation regardless. Of the social dynamics involved, the law, he noted, was remarkably egalitarian in its application to violent crime. The education session concluded with David's explanation of what would happen next, delivered with the calm certainty of someone who'd spent years implementing complex operations with precision timing. He would be escorting Michael to the principal's office to file formal complaints about the criminal assault they had just witnessed. School security would be reviewing surveillance footage that documented the entire incident. Local police would be contacted to investigate federal civil rights violations. Brandon's group would remain in the classroom until security arrived to escort them to administrative offices where they would wait for their parents and legal representation. Any attempt to leave the classroom or contact outside parties would be considered obstruction of justice and would result in additional charges being filed. The systematic nature of David's response revealed planning and preparation that went far beyond spontaneous intervention. He'd apparently been documenting patterns of abuse for months, building legal cases that could withstand the kind of expensive defense strategies that wealthy families typically employed to protect their children. that wealthy families typically employed to protect their children from consequences. His knowledge of federal civil rights law was extensive and current, suggesting ongoing education that went far beyond what a typical custodial worker would need for his daily responsibilities. His understanding of surveillance systems and evidence collection protocols revealed technical expertise that seemed inconsistent with his stated background as former military maintenance personnel. Most significantly, his calm confidence in facing down four wealthy teenagers who were accustomed to getting their way suggested experience with much more dangerous adversaries in much more consequential situations. This was someone who'd faced real threats and neutralized them efficiently, someone for whom teenage social dynamics represented minor tactical challenges rather than serious confrontations. Brandon Chen's final attempt to assert dominance through threats against David's employment revealed complete failure to understand the tactical situation he was facing. He promised that his father's connections would result in David's immediate termination, that his family's donations to Roosevelt High would ensure that custodial staff who interfered with students would be replaced by more compliant workers. David's response was perhaps the most chilling moment of the entire confrontation, delivered with the kind of absolute certainty that made everyone in the room understand that fundamental power dynamics had shifted permanently. He explained that his employment at Roosevelt High was the least important consideration in his current decision-making process, that protecting vulnerable students from criminal assault took precedence over personal economic concerns, that some principals were worth any sacrifice necessary to uphold them. He further noted that Brandon's threats against his employment actually constituted additional criminal charges, that retaliation against witnesses to federal crimes was itself a federal crime, that wealthy families who believed they could intimidate witnesses were exactly the kind of defendants that federal prosecutors pursued with maximum aggression. The confrontation concluded with David's phone call to Principal Walsh, delivered in speakerphone mode so that everyone in the classroom could hear the conversation that would determine their immediate futures. His report was factual and precise, focusing on criminal actions rather than social dynamics, emphasizing federal civil rights violations rather than school disciplinary issues. Principal Walsh arrived within minutes accompanied by two security officers and Vice Principal Harrison. The sight that greeted them was unprecedented in Roosevelt High's prestigious history. Four of their most influential students sitting in stunned silence while a custodial worker calmly documented criminal evidence on his smartphone. David's video had captured the entire assault sequence, including clear audio of the threats against Michael's family. The evidence was comprehensive and damning, showing premeditated coordination that elevated simple bullying into federal civil rights violations. Walsh reviewed the footage with growing horror, realizing that her daughter Jessica was prominently featured in criminal activity that could destroy her college prospects forever. The next hour unfolded with military precision as David coordinated with arriving police officers to preserve evidence and document witness statements. His knowledge of investigative procedures impressed Detective Rodriguez, who recognized tactical expertise that suggested extensive law enforcement training. When asked about his background, David simply provided his service record number and suggested they contact Navy Personnel Command for verification. The phone call that followed changed everything about how the situation was perceived and handled. Detective Rodriguez emerged from his conversation with naval intelligence wearing the expression of someone who'd just discovered they were dealing with a classified national asset. David Martinez wasn't just any former military personnel. He was a decorated SEAL Team Six operator whose service record was so sensitive that portions remain classified fifteen years after his retirement. The revelation transformed the administrative response from routine disciplinary procedures to crisis management protocols designed to minimize institutional liability. Roosevelt High's carefully cultivated reputation for exclusivity suddenly became a vulnerability when media outlets learned that elite private school students had assaulted a scholarship recipient while a decorated war hero worked as their janitor. Brandon Chen's father arrived first, bringing the high-powered attorney who'd successfully navigated previous incidents involving his son's violent behavior. Richard Chen's confidence evaporated when he learned that the victim's defender wasn't another wealthy parent but a Navy SEAL whose military decorations included three Purple Hearts and a Congressional Medal of Honor for actions that remained classified. The legal strategy shifted immediately from intimidation tactics to damage control negotiations. Federal prosecutors were already reviewing the case for civil rights violations, and the presence of a decorated veteran as a witness eliminated any possibility of portraying the incident as harmless teenage pranks. The Chen family's previous success at buying their way out of consequences had created exactly the kind of pattern that federal authorities loved to prosecute. Jessica Walsh's involvement created additional complications for the school administration as her access to confidential student records suggested institutional corruption that extended beyond individual criminal behavior. Her mother faced potential federal charges for failing to maintain proper security protocols, while the school district confronted systemic liability for allowing privileged students to weaponize administrative resources against vulnerable classmates. The media response was swift and merciless, with national outlets seizing on a story that perfectly illustrated wealth inequality in American education. Videos of the confrontation spread across social media platforms, generating millions of views and thousands of comments supporting both Michael Rodriguez and David Martinez. The narrative of a decorated war hero protecting a scholarship student from wealthy bullies resonated powerfully with audiences frustrated by institutional inequality. Michael's academic performance improved dramatically once the systematic harassment ended, allowing his natural intelligence to flourish without constant psychological pressure. His calculus competition results earned him a full scholarship to Stanford University, along with multiple other offers from prestigious institutions that had learned his story through news coverage. David's identity as a decorated veteran led to numerous job offers from security firms and military contractors willing to pay ten times his custodial salary. He declined them all, choosing to remain at Roosevelt High, where his presence served as protection for other vulnerable students who might face similar harassment. The school board implemented comprehensive anti-bullying policies that included mandatory reporting protocols and independent investigation procedures designed to prevent administrative cover-ups. David was appointed to a newly created position as student safety coordinator, officially recognizing his role in protecting vulnerable students from institutional failure. Brandon Chen was expelled and faced federal charges that resulted in two years of supervised probation along with mandatory community service at homeless shelters and food banks. His college applications were withdrawn, and his family's reputation never recovered from the national media attention surrounding his criminal behavior. The other three students faced similar consequences, with their privileged futures replaced by permanent criminal records that followed them throughout their adult lives. Their family's attempts to buy silence through financial settlements were rejected by federal prosecutors who viewed wealthy defendants as examples that needed to be made publicly. Sarah Martinez's cancer went into remission six months later, allowing the family to celebrate not just her health but David's transformation from invisible janitor to respected protector of student welfare. The insurance coverage that had initially kept him silent ultimately enabled him to take the stand that changed everything for countless vulnerable students. Years later, Michael Rodriguez returned to Roosevelt High as a successful engineer and donor, establishing a scholarship fund specifically for working-class students who demonstrated academic excellence despite economic disadvantage. His speech at the dedication ceremony credited David Martinez with saving not just his education, but his belief that justice was possible even in systems designed to protect privilege over merit. David continued working at Roosevelt High until his retirement, becoming a legend among students who understood that real strength came from protecting others rather than exploiting them. His story was taught in military leadership courses as an example of how service values transcended uniform. Requirements: how true warriors continued fighting for justice regardless of their official duties. The custodial cart still squeaked as it rolled through Roosevelt High's hallways, but now it was pushed by someone whose presence reminded everyone that heroism could be found in the most unexpected places, that courage meant standing up for others regardless of personal cost, and that sometimes the most important battles were fought not on foreign battlefields but in the quiet corners of American institutions where power met principle and justice hung in the balance. The legend of the Navy SEAL janitor became part of Roosevelt High's permanent culture, ensuring that future generations of students understood that wealth and privilege came with responsibilities rather than exemptions, that character mattered more than bank accounts, and that real leadership meant protecting those who couldn't protect themselves. Up next, you've got two more standout stories right on your screen. If this one hit the mark, you won't want to pass these up. Just click and check them out.